Thank you. This is the amenities committee meeting on Tuesday, the 5th of March. We'll start with item 722. Does anybody have any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests, please?
Non-pecuniary, I think I might have some in that I am part of the Admiral's Estate as a councillor, so it does affect me. And also, I'm part of the Norwich Road Residents Committee, so I'll declare that, thank you.
Yeah. Any others?
No, just one from myself on the school grant that we're looking at from Abbey Action Group. It is the ward that I represent and I have helped them with their application, so I won't vote on that in an abundance of caution.
Sorry, not on this committee, so do I have to declare it?
No, because you don't get a vote.
723, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
I do know that Mike Brindle gave me his apologies. He's had an operation today, so he's not able to join us.
724, minutes from the amenities committee held on the 27th of February. Are you content that they are a true and accurate record?
Yep.
Moving on to 725, town team managers' report. Over to Nick.
Okay, thank you very much. The town team report for February 2024. The town team have carried out a range of tasks during the month of February. Tasks have included the maintenance, cleaning and checking of the town's street furniture, playparks, public toilets, allotment sites, open spaces and the cemetery, as well as the buildings and assets owned by the town council. We've also been working alongside Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council in highways to report any issues under their ownerships to help improve the town. Underpasses, so the town team have recently again visited the minister gate, Gleave Close and Croxton Road underpasses to assist with keeping these clean and free from graffiti. They have also attended to the drains and a full wash down was carried out to eliminate odours and fowling within these areas. We continue to contact Norfolk highways to stress to them that these assets are their responsibility and they have an obligation to maintain them. Street lighting, so Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council have again been contacted with regards to street lights not working in and around the town. The faulty lights and locations again reported so far, which still needed repairs up until today, which I was updated. These have now all been repaired with school lane car park, Bridges Walk and the Abbey Estate shop area. Abbey Estate, Yorkway and Winchester Way are still currently out of action and this is down to further UK power networks problems. All responsible parties have confirmed that all units reported are being checked and repaired or replaced and they encourage councillors and the public to continue to report any faulty lighting not currently operational to them. Dog fowling issues, the town team alongside councillor Jeremy have been working alongside Breckland Council officers and the dog warden. A campaign was launched which saw both Fethford Town Council and Breckland Council working together in combining the local, in combating the local residents' issues with both dog fowling and fly tipping within the open spaces of the town. Signage on the day was placed within the hotspot areas where residents had reported an increased level of offences taking place. The Breckland Council enforcement team assisted the town council officers in advising what enforcement could be carried out, as well as the sighting of the appropriate signage which highlights any offenders within the locations. Licensed approved enforcement cameras are also being used now to catch offenders and issued fixed penalties of on this spot fines for dog fowling are going to be of £100 and up to £1,000 of legal action being taken where appropriate. All fly tipping now carries a £1,000 fine and legal action against this. The town council continue to work alongside the enforcement team and it is hoped that there will be more in action, being taken, the offenders will be dealt with appropriately going forward. The new appropriate signage has now been ordered also from the town council, from Breckland Council. This will be further placed for the requested areas of problems and the enforcement within these sites will also be carried out with Breckland Council going forward once these have been delivered and put up. Street furniture, the town team have continued to clean and wash and remove graffiti from the town's street furniture, playparks, notice boards as part of their regular ongoing cleaning schedules. They continue to report through any litter bins and dog waste bins that need replacement or repairs going forward. These will be scheduled in between the town council and Breckland in identifying the ones under different ownerships, responsibility to be replaced. A new litter bin has now recently been installed to Bridge Street close to the Grammar School and this is showing good use since this was first installed. This was working together with both Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council on the highlighted area of the town that was having issues with increased litter. The team are also looking at the refurbishment of benches at the following locations, Castle Park, Nunnery Drive, Town Centre, Riverside Walk and the Barnham Common areas. New signage for sites, a new signage currently being produced for the public toilet sites and this will go live in the coming weeks. The information will contain the opening hours of each site, as well as the out of hours emergency number should any issues occur or need to be resolved immediately. We have also developed a five question survey for a QR code, as well as the manual option on the website. This will enable the public to inform officers and the committee for irregular updates of how happy they are with these facilities. Our thanks goes to councillor Doug Jefferson for helping us in advising on how this new survey could be produced. Emergency number will also be distributed to the following locations, the fire service, the ambulance service, the police and also to other TTC owned sites. Castle Mound and Ramparts, our specialist grounds maintenance contractor is carrying out the work on Castle Mound site. These works are well underway and the self set trees are currently being removed and treated as part of the works to further protect the ancient scheduled monument. As part of the vegetation clearance works, the team will be leaving brash and log piles and habitats and an area of bramble will also be left to the rear of the mound for birds nesting. The team along with the conservation volunteers, under the guidance of the BTO, would also place and put up a range of bird boxes, bat boxes, where possible to also return some of the habitat lost as part of the clearance works needed to the site alongside our other areas. Barnham Commons, the works are now finalised and finishing at Barnham Common ahead of the bird nesting season fast approaching. This has also seen a lot of gorse recently removed by a contractor and our conservation volunteers using both mechanical and traditional hand methods. Following the works being carried out, this has highlighted that rabbits are successively surviving and breeding on the areas of the Barnham Cross Common site. Unfortunately, during the last week of February, we have experienced damage to assets of the Barnham Cross Common site. The permanent water main supply drinking troughs and water bowels were attacked. Holes were intentionally punctured into these continually to drain them. Repair works are now underway to get these back operational again before the livestock are introduced into the area. There will be going forward, there'll be cameras installed on the site where possible to protect these items going forward and we are already working together with Norfolk Police who will step up further patrols to the site, working together to enforce and take action on any criminal activity taking place within these areas. We would also like to remind the public who walk dogs on the site, always to keep their dogs on leas. Worrying of livestock is a criminal offence and Norfolk Police will prosecute any offenders that are caught once livestock are introduced to the site. Graziers, the grazing licence has just been drawn up and it's now officially signed and finalised by our new grazer. We've also released a press release and social media post to welcome Charles and Matthews Heard to our sites along with our vice chair of amenities, council hazel at Cambridge. Sir Fredericks Wood and with Woodlands and Fairfields, works are due to be carried out to Sir Fredericks Wood shortly following the consultation that was held with residents with the other cultural contractor. The social media post and press release were again released to let residents know that approved works will be soon to be taken place within the site. The town team have also continued to carry out the trimming back of vegetation along the boundary line as much as possible ahead of these much needed works taking place on the trimming of the trees slightly away from the boundary. The SAMs 2, the SAMs 2 speed machine again has recently been installed within the London Road area and this will now be gathering data for a period of four weeks. The data once retrieved will then be passed over to Norfolk highways and Norfolk police. Recent data retrieved from the Ignold Way area has also been sent over to Norfolk Police and highways for their attention. Playparks, the team have recently been cleaning equipment on the play areas and carrying out repair works where possible. Castle Park here is currently back in operation following an investigation being carried out to this piece of equipment and the team will continue to monitor the minor repairs that have been carried out. Other works the team have also recently carried out include the removal of abandoned highway signage no longer in use, removal of redundant street furniture fixings including sign frames, cleaner of safety bollards, removal of fly postering, pothole repairs to sites, Legionella compliance monitoring, facilities checks and minor repair works to the Fish Pass following flooding. Tree ground projects, so following the successful application and bid submission for the 1 million trees for Norfolk in association with Norfolk County Council and the buses group, we have managed to secure the funding for the total of 25 trees. The planting currently took place across the sites on areas to replace those trees sadly lost previously at both the cemetery and the amenity space close to the Barnham Common. Currently, eight trees have been planted by our conservation volunteers and the rest are now being planted by the local schools within the open spaces. The trees which are being planted at each site are all varieties which will provide a high source of nectar and pollen and a food source for fruit and fruit for wildlife. The school children while taking part in the planting have also been taking part in activities of making fat balls to be used within the bird feeders at the cemetery site and this has been through the kind help of staff running these events on site. Also, while the visits took place, there has been a small educational element, teaching the children about the wonderful wildlife that thrives within a peaceful place where we lay our loved ones to rest. Keeping Britain Tidy, Spring Clean pledge for Fethford. So following the last amenities committee meeting, we've registered for the Keep Britain Tidy campaign and have pledged that over two days, Fethford Town Council will collect a minimum of 30 refuse sacks of waste over the two day event. The event will be held over two days on Friday, the 22nd of March and Saturday, the 23rd of March. This will see officers, councillors, local businesses, groups and members of the public take part in the pledge of litter picking areas of the town. We will also work alongside Breckland Council and Serco on the day. Following the event, we will then update as part of the national database how much litter was actually collected from the areas of the town. Following high water levels, the Fish Pass repairs, so the team again have been checking daily the Fish Pass and this is a constant sort of cycle for the team. And as the waters levels are now dropped, again, they've carried out more repairs today. Weekend monitoring, so the weekend monitoring followed on from the recent introduction of the monitoring of the town council's facilities at weekends, I'm pleased to update that this is proceeding well and being successful on a couple of, only a couple of weeks ago. The staff member rostered on duty that weekend was carrying out their checks to the sites in the monitoring in the morning and the sites were found locked as the contractor staff member was running slightly late due to personal issues. Thankfully, this was then covered by the in-house staff member and the contractor was the ace with and forced to forfeit their costs for that day. Recruitment of additional staff members. So the applications went out for people to apply for the job positions and that's going really well and successful and we're getting good response and feedback coming in on applications. Conservation volunteers, a brief update on the conservation volunteers. The volunteers have been busy working alongside David and the town team throughout the month of February. Sites included again Barnham Common, which have seen the move, further removal of gorse vegetation as part of the management plans for the sites and the protection of the triple SI area. This was on the Riverside Common, the part of the common. Litter picking, checking of sites was also carried out to report back any concerns for the areas following their visits. The group have also continued to check the fences around the other sites, including Ford Meadow, Castle Park and check in areas including Sir Fredericks Wood and Main Street Woodlands. They've also carried out again some tree planting further down near the Barnham Common open space. Up and coming works for the group installation of further bird boxes and bat boxes, as well as owl boxes for the open spaces will be installed, working together with councillors and the BTO. These will then be mapped and passed on to the relevant organisations licensed to monitor them for us working together. Partnerships, following officers' requests, working alongside the BTO and a fantastic report and action plan have been developed looking at how the town council can also support our wildlife, not just within our outer parks of the town, but also within our urban spaces we also own and manage. This could see Fethford Town Council further support the national programmes to encourage the further breeding of swifts as well as kestrels, tawny owls and barn owls. Working again together with local organisations, the conservation group will start to look at the creating of habitats within our open spaces, as well as the various buildings and spaces within the town. Installation of new wooden benches will also be created within the open spaces if funding can be sought. This will encourage people into the open spaces, including Ford Meadow and also Barnham Common to enable residents in the community to get out and enjoy these open space areas, as well as to discourage any antisocial behaviour from happening within them. Community participation for open spaces 24, as the weather improves, we will also be looking at the following events to help promote the open spaces and increase public and officer presence, as well as engagement with the community on the Barnham Common. We'll also be carrying out hopefully a Wild About Fethford town event, which will encourage people to get involved in the local community. Barnham Common guided walks, this will be carried out by David. He's one of our town team members and carries out the conservation side of the job. School and community group trips to the open spaces again will also be led on the expertise helping and assisting with bats, birds, butterflies and flora and fauna. In total, the hours volunteered this month by the volunteers to the community was 32 hours.
You can breathe now.
Thank you, Nick. Really useful report, lots of information there. Appreciate everything that everyone's been working on. Does anyone have any questions or comments, please, on any of the content? Mac?
Just wondering if I could, well, discover if I could. Firstly, probably the most enjoyable part of being a councillor is listening to that report. You probably think it's awful, but at least it feels like something positive's happening. So I've got a couple of questions. One's a statement, dog fowling, we got the signs up on the estate. Brilliant. It hasn't stopped anything, so I'm hoping, working alongside with Breckland, we will get those cameras because that's the only way it's going to work. They don't seem to have taken any notice of it. The graffiti wipes, we got some through the council for the Residence Estate. We used them to clear some stuff off. Brilliant that we had that opportunity. We might need to ask for another box again, but that was really good. Thank you very much. The SAM 2, is there any way that you can pass the data through to STAG? Because we will try and still poke the nest with that with regard to community speed watch. I'm not sure it automatically goes through police, community speed watch. I did ask last time, did we manage to get bird boxes and feeders done locally?
So we did, yeah, we got them through Menchett.
Menchett, brilliant. Thank you very much. And no, that's it for now. Thank you.
Just on the dog fowling, Max, I know it's a big issue for Norwich Road area. I happened to be available the day that the dog warden and the enforcement team came down and it's very much a two-stage process where they put the signs up first so that nobody can say they're not aware. But then very much following up with the enforcement side and Stuart has raised points at Breckland about, is there a willingness at Breckland to sort of see it through from a sort of fine point of view? And there is, which is really encouraging. We've seen lots of fines for fly tipping, but very few for dog fowling and I think a few good, high profile cases will be really beneficial. And the one thing that did come out of it was the dog warden was saying how he's very keen for his contact details to be shared and he's happy to visit residents' groups, parish town councils. And he made a really good point that nearly always the people that are most angry about dog fowling are other dog walkers because, and actually while we were out, any time we saw somebody with a dog, he went and introduced himself to them, gave whoever it was their business card and encouraged them to ring him and report any incidents, you know, dates, times, that sort of thing. So I thought that was really interesting and a sort of, an aspect of the dog warden's job I didn't quite appreciate. You know, we all hear about collecting stray dogs, but the dog fowling bit, actually they take it really seriously. So the more we can do to promote his contact details, but he was very willing and.
Is that Steve? I can't remember his name now.
No.
It's not.
Somebody's absolutely wrong.
Yeah, so I'll ping an email, that's all councillors on the amenities committee as well.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly pushed it on the residents' association to report it as much as possible, but I think we all know how, you know, modern lives make that a bit difficult.
Chris, please.
Yeah, thank you. I was able to get some dog fowling signs from James on, for our area. But I think they've run out now, but if anyone needs any, I'll try and get some more.
Yep. These are the little sticky ones that you just put on the sides.
Yeah, stick on the hook.
Yeah. Hello.
Regarding the Fish Pass, I know that's temporary measures, but I also mentioned new measurements and temporary sort of fixing to it because of the flooding. I was wondering, we actually, the watering levels don't seem to decrease very soon. Is this something that is going to be a recurring issue or is this something that's a patchy enough for now?
At the present, we, yeah, at present, we're sort of talking to sort of Fish Tech who designed it. So we've got a contractor who's sort of speaking with them at the moment to get some recommendations of what else can be done to the structure potentially. So there is some talk and background going on at the moment with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Hazel?
What time is the Keep Britain Tidy tech meeting?
So I think we're aiming for everybody to start meeting around about nine thirty and then we'll start around about 10 and it'll be about a two hour slot for everybody. But there will be some bits and pieces going out shortly on social media. So it'll be released shortly on posts and bits and some more updates. Yeah.
Okay. Just a couple from me. Firstly, I'm really pleased to see that we're actually asking for people's opinions now and feedback particularly around the public toilets, but also I know you want to roll this out to other locations. And I think that's quite important for us to note when there are sort of issues with cleaning or opening. And you've mentioned there the survey. Are we gonna, you know, every so often are you going to sort of update us as a committee with the results?
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna hopefully do is produce a spreadsheet and I'll be able to come along and update amenities meetings, sort of regular updates. So I'll go in, what sort of, you know, comments have come in, if there's anything in particular that we have an issues with.
Good. Grazing, really pleased to see the new arrangement with the grazers and thank you Hazel for attending the sort of launch of that with the press release. When are we likely to see animals on Castle Park? Because I think from a public point of view, that's new.
Yeah, so all being well, we're looking at the moment, he's gonna completely update me next week, hopefully with some secure dates. But we're lambing and carving at the moment happening, we're looking at around about the 1st of April.
Good. And we'll be managing sort of publicity about why we're introducing grazing.
Definitely.
Because I can imagine now that my phone will be busy that day. But I think it's really positive news. I've been trying to get this phone on. And the reaction to the press release, I thought was really positive as well. People really pleased to see the grazing. On the SAM 2 and sort of road safety generally, just for information really, Norfolk County Council's cabinet met yesterday and there was an agenda item around road safety across Breckland and South Norfolk. All of the Fethford applications for funding were approved, so £20,000 for road safety measures. That includes the 30 mile an hour roundalls going on to the roads, every road into or out of. Fethford will have the roundalls to reinforce that 30 for Fethford message. There'll be additional traffic harmony measures on Bridge Street addressing the safety issue around the Grammar School. Additional signage around London Road where the crossing is there as a sort of temporary measure while other conversations take place. And there'll be additional signage on Brandon Road where the speed limit is 60, I believe. And concerns about safety, particularly the golf course. So there's a sort of package of measures across the whole of Fethford, sort of reinforcing the sort of safety message there. Hot off the press, that was approved yesterday. The tree project, really pleased to see that we are planting the 25 trees. Even more pleased that we're not paying for it. Yep. Norfolk County Council funding that, which is good news. Just to let the committee know, I happened to pop along to the session last Friday. Really sort of big thanks to the staff that led that session, David and Amber. There were three school visits that day. The one I went along to was the Grammar School. The children really enjoyed helping to plant the trees and they got to make some fat balls to go in the feeders as well. So, you know, sort of learning experience, but also really positive outcome. So really good piece of work that the town council's doing. I think. That is it.
Yep, lovely. Thank you very much, Nick, for the report and wish you well for next month. Move on 726, the burial administrators' report. Alan, anything you want to add?
It's a very, very brief report. Nick's introduction was longer than the whole of the report. The service you picked up, it has been quieter. Your data's not the revenue flows. February was a better month, if you do have such a thing in the cemetery, and March is looking a bit better. So if you use upper capacity, that will help us from a financial perspective.
Yeah. Any questions on burial report, Hazel? Nope, noted, thank you. 727, the preliminary financial report for amenities. You've got the spreadsheet there showing income and expenditure to the most recent point. Anything to add, Alan?
I think, looking at these reports, one thing we should do is actually have the revised budget because the recent budget has been basically a disaster to that. There has been significant amount of spending around the open space management and that's because of the fact that we didn't, we had to use manual cutting and things like that. So we have set aside about another extra £19,000, which is not showing in the budget, into this particular, into amenities. So at the end of next month, we'll have a far better picture of where we are. But overall, we haven't done bad. Our revenue is on target. Our expenditure is a lot higher, but then we've had higher playparks expenditure, our open space maintenance. We've had a lot of the costs, the backlog and the clear clearing of Barnham Cross Common come through. And our vehicle leasing, we've quite rid of those old vehicles that were costing us a fortune and we're leasing additional vehicles. We have to find a solution because our leasing option is actually very expensive.
Yeah. I think just looking at the figures there, we're about double on playparks, but the vast majority of that, I think, is as a result of sort of various vandalism rather than repairs and sort of upgrades. Unfortunately, it's all related to vandalism. And although the open space is over budget, we've got an awful lot of work to catch up on for several years worth. So I personally don't mind us overspending in that regard because it's an investment in that space.
Any questions on finances? Nope, thank you. Move on to the next one, which is Ali, it's the financial report for the cemetery. Anything to add to the report? I think we've heard most of it in the administrators' report.
We keep checking, but right at the bottom of the, of the ashes and tournaments and the burials and you can see a pretty significant difference between last year and this year. And depending on the mix of whether we have non-percentage permission versus permission, that has a huge impact on our income. So our income has recovered, but compared to what it was a few months ago. But I don't think we're going to achieve that target. Our expenditure is just within budget. We've had a little bit of maintenance in the cemetery that we've incurred in recent months.
Good.
Just one on that, it occurred to me that we, the chapel maintenance is always low and we spend very little on it. And I just wonder if we might be slightly, you know, quietly walking into a problem with that in the future. We've done it with a lot of our other buildings where we haven't maintained them. You know, is it time that we had a review to say, is there something pending? Because we're not spending at all and it is an old building.
I think we feel confident that we don't have any backlog basis. We don't, if something goes wrong, we're actually fixing it there and there. There's something that's in backlog, and Nick will confirm. We have spent a lot of money in, not last year, the year before, but certainly then we were spending a fair amount of money getting it right. So I think, you know, the attitude that the work team are setting is to ensure that we don't, you know, we don't ignore a problem. If there's something arises or something needs to be done, we're actually doing it. We'll find the money, we'll play around with budgets to make sure that happens.
Brilliant, thanks.
Happy to note the report. Thank you. 729, review of the proposed project budget for the year ahead. This is something that came out of the most recent finance committee meeting. We hold a separate projects budget as a council, which we need to review every so often to see if there's anything on there that needs to be removed or anything that members want added. Is there anything, Alan, you want to say by way of an introduction?
It's very difficult to take a budget in that thick of a place. We just do a project budget in totality. It goes to all the various committees and this is really, you know, we set it out to finance and personnel. There is a little bit of immunity, immunity stuff, sculpture trail, for example, the playpark renewal reserve. We've had to set aside substantial amounts of money for that. And that's, and the application to the Norfolk County Council Parish partnerships, which we've done. We've set aside money for the redevelopment of ranty clothes because that's possibly happening, possibly not happening, and that's also been set aside projects budget. But otherwise, if there's any other projects, the one thing that we are conscious of as we, if we start bringing a lot of the services in house, we're going to have to invest a little bit more in equipment. We haven't been able to estimate that at the moment, but it is something that we're very conscious of.
Any questions? And the one that jumped out at me, which is sort of something that hasn't been completed but was started, is the Thomas Paine statue. So we repainted it, it's lovely gold, but the plinth is still looking a bit worse aware. And we used to have some money set aside to fix the plinth, then it disappeared. And I know we were looking at perhaps a sort of lottery funding bid, that sort of thing. Is there any money currently allocated for fixing the plinth?
Is there any money currently allocated for fixing the plinth?
We allocate, we set aside money in this year's budget.
And you pinched it back down.
Our project budget is. We get a lot of cheap fall, so it just fall all over the set.
Um Nick, we did eventually, I think, get at least one quote for the plinth, didn't we, to fix it?
I think, yeah, thinking back, I think we had two, three maybe. And I'm push, yeah, so I think there was some interest and we managed to get some people involved in quoting for it. And we could revisit again, just try to give us a a costing figure.
Yeah, because I think there was an issue getting the right contractor, wasn't there? Because it's quite sort of specialist work, so.
Definitely.
Uh is that something the committee are interested in revisiting and and seeing it through? Yon, no, happy for point?
No, definitely. Um yeah, if the plinth fails, then all the other good work goes to pot. And and it is one of the the key hallmarks of the town.
Yep. Yeah, so if we dig out those quotes to get a realistic figure and uh see if we can work out if there's a project money for it. Uh other than that, is there anything on that list there that anyone wants to comment on or ask about or suggest that we do different?
Just a point of clarification about the note, the F FRA seventy five K, what was that?
Uh that's a fire risk assessment, uh it's substantial, uh it's such a big backlog. Uh new alarm systems, fireproofing doors, so we are the best, but that's just the. That feel of the party come up and so forth. It is out.
Yeah, I noticed that um fifteen thousand has been put aside for the marketplace sound system. Um given the uh microphone system we had in use at the uh at the Carnegie last week. I would um sort of encourage that we do look at that fully and map it out properly before we go ahead. Um the, I I don't know how much the the Carnegie one cost, but it didn't really seem to work, to be honest. So um I'll be very keen that we, you know, full diligence on that one, please.
Is that something that's funded by a sort of a grant legacy? Is that an MTI one, the marketplace sound system? Is that our own money?
It's our own money.
Noted, thank you. Okay, uh move on to, does that give you what you want from that?
It does, thank you.
Good. Move on to seven three zero, small grants, I believe we have two applications to consider. Uh would you like to introduce the first one, Alan?
Uh the first one is the Abbey uh Abbey Action Group. Um it's a very unusual one for us because if we look at our grant framework, it actually talks about projects. And this is actually talking about a funding bid, so it was quite difficult to to assess from that particular perspective. Because they're not saying, well, this is the project we're going to do, uh it is, these are actions that we actually want to take and they're legal, professional, et cetera. So it was quite difficult. So in terms of complying with the um the requirements of the the grant, you know, other than some vague details which we've already resolved. It's really the committee are happy to do a general funding application or stick to the 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 rules of the small grant scheme, which is a public based uh uh application.
Does anyone have any strong opinions either way?
I'd probably better not speak.
And I thought we updated the rules a while ago to say that sort of running costs for groups were okay. Rather than, you know, projects are preferred, but actually running costs are okay.
Even if it was running costs, we would expect that you'd have something to specify because the problem is you you can't measure your grant if you don't. If you don't have something that said after fun, it's actually really difficult to go back and say, well, did you comply with the grant or to apply for the extension? And that's that's the difficulty of it. I mean, every year we do these grant applications, we learn more and more from a practicality perspective, but this is one of those particular cases.
Okay, but we are able to approve it if members wanted to approve it.
Yep.
Any for us? Yeah. Could I have a proposal in favour of support, Chris? Second up, Stuart, all those in favour? Approved. Thank you. Uh second grant application?
The second grant application is from Enable Fettford. I think that they've previously submitted applications and they may not have been successful. But really is a, what they're looking for is funding of the wild being fair, uh so they've designated the dates of March nineteenth. And what they're hoping to do is actually um um kind of get people of the town uh together and explore different ways of living a positive life. They've fully complied with the requirements of the grant.
Chris? I I might have supported you, you know, the people who work is good, do very well, the people who mess well amongst us and the disciples, et cetera. They've done cracking job over the years and bend my ear on several occasions, so.
Is there an issue with the, you said March, the?
Nineteen.
This March.
It's this.
Okay. Okay, a tie.
Yeah.
Uh well. Slightly worried if we say no, what will happen? Okay, any other questions? No, just for the the public's benefit, because I appreciate we're rattling through these. Um the applications come in and the staff do an assessment, uh there's a checklist uh that they do in advance, which is circulated to councillors several days before the meeting. So the full application, the constitution, copy of bank statement, that's all been shared with councillors uh in advance of the meeting. And the criteria is if if you meet the rules and you are eligible, very rarely, I can't think of ever, we've said no. You know, the rules are there and if you adhere to them, uh the grant is approved, essentially, that's the way it works. Uh just in case you thought we were uh we was in through. Um can I have a proposal in favour of Enable Fettford? Stuart and a second up, Carla, all those in favour? Agreed, thank you very much. Any further applications?
Uh we think one came in very recently, it's just been to the wrong email address.
Who did?
So Mike Gertin, come on to next month.
Okay.
I've got twelve this afternoon, so.
Okay, but in terms, I mean, this is the last meeting of this financial year, and I think we're remarkably on track for small grants, aren't we? We sort of.
Slightly overspent.
Slightly overspent, but.
We had four carried forward from last year, that's.
Oh, okay, right, okay. That's, that's good, that's, you know, it's a good uh source of support for local groups. So I'm really pleased that people are actually uh applying. Uh right, moving on, seven three one, update on the higher level stewardship payments from the Rural Payments Agency. That's an awful, uh Alan?
I've got since, sometimes, but February I've got seen some forms to say, please renew your existing agreements. And we went to sign it, instead of just normally signing them and sending them back to exploit it. And we've gone to our own professional advisors and they've come back and said, our existing agreement is actually very low. Why don't we go for a new agreement? Uh it will cost us one thousand five hundred, but we would probably triple the amount of money that we get from the from the RBA. Uh so what I put into the pack today, circulated here, you could just see the amounts. Uh um it just doesn't mean really much to me because I'm an accountant, not a not a not a groundsman. But uh basically what we're going to do is ask them to enter new agreements. We have to just check what our obligations are under these agreements, because if you're getting higher amounts of money, we've got to make sure that our obligations in order of the new agreements are affordable to us, you know, we'd rather get our fifteen or twenty thousand uh and not spend a significant amount of money or get triple that and have to spend, you know, five times as much money as we do. So we just want to get that assurance. I was hoping to get a more up to date feedback today, but unfortunately we haven't got it. I think we have shortly missed the deadline for our existing agreement, but it'll just be a matter of, the new agreement seems a lot more logical and seems to be the preferred way to go.
So the question to the committee is, would we like more money for doing work that we're already doing?
Hopefully that is.
Possibly, possibly the easiest question to know.
Hopefully yes, it depends on our obligations, that's all it does, you know.
No, I think we've discussed a few times the the Royal Payment Agency money and we've sort of struggled to understand it frankly. But the one thing is clear, we've been working under a framework, uh which was a legacy for quite a period of time, it's, you know, existed years ago. Um and for once, this seems like it's something that works in our favour, that they're increasing the amounts to to manage the land. Which is crucial because as we've heard from Nick's report, we've spent a fortune, particularly on Barnham Common, um maintaining it to a standard that meets their specifications. So I think it's only right that they helped cover the costs um of that. Uh any questions from, and we've essentially sort of wish Alan well with his investigations? Look forward to you bringing good news back.
I must be eating if we give pressure.
No pressure. Lovely. Thank you. Uh move on to seven three two, Yusuf Ramsey Close as an allotment site, review and discuss the feedback received on the consultations. And Alan, are you able to give us an overview of what has happened the last few weeks with the consultation? What sort of the town council's done, because I know you sort of coordinated a few bits of it.
What we did is we, if we went back a number of months ago, we we actually spoke to people on Ranty Coles uh itself. Um we then did a more formal exercise where we actually sent them a letter uh to the residents of Ranty Coles. Uh we had two two responses and then ironically enough, a week later from one of those respondents, they actually applied to be on the the first person on the waiting list for 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 a full beat up in sight. And then uh we got a lot more comments around whether the consultation had been wider than. So what we did is we then developed a little bit of a brochure, uh we delivered, we had five hundred copies of that made, it's a little bit to to all the residents of Norwich Road Estate. And on that brochure, we'd actually planned a walk-in session, which happened last Monday, where councillors were available to 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 be to the public and get comments. We collected comments uh at that particular evening, we asked people to specify their names and address. And then we also had set up a um kind of email process where people could leave out in their comments. And we've had a flow of comments coming in and we've had about two possible problems also. That's really the status of it. Uh in terms of the numbers, uh we've had some people that haven't put their name down, so we've excluded that. But we've had uh thirty. Um thirty-six. Uh bear in mind, there's a few comments. Um and that's what we've just analysed and I've summarised into the pack that got sent to councillors. Uh the consultation at the close at five o'clock yesterday, so it's the the lateness in getting the information to you.
Yeah, lovely, thank you, Alan. Um so I've got a couple of points which I'll kick off with. Um I think the first point I'd like to make, and I think it's really important that people remember this. Um this journey started following requests from residents. Now, I've seen a lot obviously on uh Facebook and elsewhere about the importance of councillors representing their residents. Um and they work for us, if I had a pound for every time somebody said that to me lately, I'd be very rich. And I think we absolutely do work for the public, but it's important to remember that um this is a really good example where not everybody will agree. Um there are clearly people who are in support of allotments, I think the consultation shows that. And there are people not in support of allotments uh in that location. Um our job as uh councillors is to assess all of that information and other information and make the best possible decision. But uh I think it's really sad when people start attacking councillors for saying they're not listening or not acting of residents um views. We're in an impossible position where we can't represent all of the people all of the time because there's a complete different uh set of opinions. And so that was the first point I wanted to make. And the other point was that I've seen comments in the correspondence about councillors having already made their minds up. Now, uh I can absolutely tell you that my mind is not made up. I've sat and read and I know I encourage several of you to come and read in full all of the consultation responses. I've read all of the emails that we've received. Uh I went to the consultation drop-in, I was there for nearly all of the three hours and had some really useful conversations. Uh and in addition to that, I've been out myself and knocked on uh Ramsey, Mountbatten and Hawthorne to speak to people directly because they are, you know, the most uh impacted. Um so I think I've got a good understanding of people's opinions and uh there are people who uh don't want to see allotments there at all. Uh and there are people there that absolutely do want to see allotments uh there and has gone as far as putting themselves on the waiting list for allotments, which I think was amusing. Um our job this evening uh as a committee is to decide firstly if you've got sufficient information to make a decision and if there's any other information that you want, um but also to decide uh what that decision should be. However, we don't have the power as amenities committee, because I asked Alan to check. Uh under our terms of reference to make the final decision, it would be a recommendation to full council. Um uh some things we can make resolved, other things have to be a recommendation to full council. So uh we don't get the final say, as it were, this evening. Um the other really important piece of information is, again, because I've asked Alan to double check. Um the legal aspect uh and the sort of rather important fact that there's a covenant on the piece of land uh is not resolved yet. And so my own view is I'm not overly comfortable in making a decision until that is resolved. Um I'd much rather have all of the information at my disposal before I make a decision. Um so that's where I'm at, uh but I'd be very keen to hear uh other people's comments and suggestions. Chris?
I really enjoyed the consultation, being chair of allotments, I'm not really, I'm not biased, I haven't made up my own mind. I'm waiting for things to come back in, I had a really interesting conversation with several residents. It was a mixture, we had some ideas come in, shares, et cetera, et cetera. I need to think now that we mustn't rush into this, I agree with Tony, we'll wait for the big or bit of the covenant to go through and then we'll come back and see how we go. We have to do things in the right way.
Yeah, and I should also add that um in addition to the consultation results that are in your pack, which was the town council consultation. Um I've also received a petition from Norwich Road Residents Association uh this evening, uh asking, I haven't had time to read it fully. But it's asking essentially for the decision to be deferred, so just so you're aware. Um and uh there's uh clearly quite a lot of signatures. Um I should also make the point that frustratingly, I think apathy rules, the winner was apathy because thirty-three responses out of an estate that big is a bit frustrating. Um but, you know, that's the way we're at. Yon?
Can you just um explain a bit more about the covenant?
I'll just take that one, Alan. I passed the awkward one, Stephen.
Uh when the name was filed for Breckin Council to uh to Clever Town Council, the the covenant was that it could only be used as a playpark for 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 playpark activities and that covenant is still on it. So if we wanted to change it, it's not a general immunity type covenant, it's actually a specific playpark covenant. So if we had to change the use, whether it's more general immunity space, allotments, whatever the case may be, we'd have to actually get that covenant changed. Uh Breckin Council are getting legal opinion on it and then there's a whole lot of costs that we have to incur. So I've had to sign orders for that process to happen, but you know, it's, I can assure you, redeeming professionals, uh it takes time, you know. And and so, you know, I get, uh I had feedback a few weeks ago to say, updating me on the process. And it's not really not really much to report on.
Thank you.
Alan? Um I guess I haven't made my my mind on this one equally, and and I think obviously the rest, considering that. If I do buy it, it's a little bit more in favour of uh of the lotings, but it's still quite, like you said, I can see not many people participating. It doesn't give us a really clear vision and the few that do quite speak at the moment, considering that they're giving emails and things to the residents. So it's really, it's a tight run on this one. Um but overall, from my perspective, I agree with you, I'm not prepared to make a decision on something that we don't even know what the terms for it are yet. We don't know what our responsibilities for that patch plan is, and when on or to change the covenant or change into whatever it is that we intend to do with it. I think that needs to be defined first. Um and I think that would be, I think their consultation was great. But if we had that information before that consultation, maybe the question could have been a bit more narrow. Yeah, this is what we can do with it and this is what we can't. Would you like to go ahead with it or not? So I think we should defer to we have a definite plan for what can and cannot be done with that.
Thank you, Carla. Stuart?
Thank you. Um now, I know lots, lots of people like the idea of allotments and many people, if they had time, energy and money, would want one. But the disused parking Ramsay Close is not necessarily the right option. Um it's great if you're thinking if we need allotments, nice healthy outdoor hobby that produces vegetables, it's not, why is it not a good idea? Um well, we lose a valuable and a unique area of recreational green space, which was given to the people of the Admiralty Estate. Despite the fact that it's not been used for a number of years, it still remains the only suitable area for a playpark on this estate. Where can our young people play? And as a council, we should be deferring this until we get further guidance and consultation from the residents on this estate. Um we must therefore look creatively to harness the energy and resources available to our town. The residents know their area best and we should. The residents know their area best and we should work with them and other groups to deliver a joint, a joint vision to do this. We should commit to developing a sustainable area that is informed, collaborative, creative and responsive. And by signing a pledge where everyone has the right to play, it could introduce a play area. We should be committed to tackling the barriers that prevent some of our communities accessing the benefits that a park would provide. And we want everyone on this estate to feel that having a park relevant to them, they are welcoming and they then the needs are catered for. Now, I've researched a couple of sort of similar situations. And a couple of situations come up that maybe a tiny forest can thrive anywhere. Crowded and polluted urban areas that need the most help maintaining clean air and water are suitable locations for mini forests. The benefits of adding native trees to urban areas extend beyond their beauty. Trees remove carbon dioxide and air pollution reduces water, and air pollution and reduce water pollution and serve, and it serves as a noise duffer. They also provide habitat for other organisms such as birds and insects. And even though mini forests are small, they can even restore biodiversity to towns almost as well as larger natural forests. Now, by signing the pledge to everyone has a right to play, they could also create fresh ideas. Like in today's world, the concept of a playground has evolved far beyond just being a place for fun. Modern playgrounds are expected to be safe places where children of all abilities can play, learn and grow. And they're often designed to be inclusive, fostering a sense of community and belonging. But there's another crucial aspect that is gaining momentum in playground design, sustainability. Sustainability is no longer a mere option, it's becoming a necessity. As we become more aware of our environment impact, it's clear that our playgrounds should not only inspire joy and creativity, but also respect and protect our planet. This is where the concept of sustainable playgrounds comes into play. Sustainable playgrounds are about creating spaces that are in harmony with the environment, using eco-friendly materials and promoting practices that help preserve our natural resources. They represent a future where play and environmental stewardship go hand in hand, shaping a greener, healthier world for our children. We do desperately need a play area for the young, young people on this estate. An allotment, an allotment would only benefit a handful of residents. But we need to explore all the options and not rush into this first option. And we really need to respect our residents and not go against their wishes. I want the residents to enjoy the green space and for generations to come, because once this area is gone, is gone.
Okay, thank you very much. Hazel?
So I'm getting the general feeling that with this covenant, we're thinking we don't want to make a decision now, we want to defer. And with the petition, a referral is, a deferral is being requested. Sorry, I'm trying to figure this out as I go. But if we're deferring because of the covenant, then we're just going to wait for that covenant to come through and then make a decision. But presumably, the petition and the residents are asking more than that, they're asking for more of it. They're not just asking for a deferral, they're asking for more of a conversation about how the area can be used. So from the discussion we're having, it feels like the deferral because of the covenant isn't answering those issues.
There might be an opportunity to continue conversations whilst we wait for the covenant to be resolved. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because it feels like we've had the, we've done this consultation, we've received the feedback from people that want to feedback to us.
Yeah.
But we haven't got an official way to go forward with, now that that's done.
Yeah.
We're just deferring.
Yeah.
For the covenant without an official way to take things forward with the residents.
Yeah. My only nervousness is that I'm all in favour of consultation. I don't think this issue has been rushed, it's been spoken about for the last year. And I don't agree with the accusations that it's being rushed. I don't see how we're going to get to a point where everybody's going to be happy with the outcome, that's the problem. So whilst I'm quite happy to continue conversations, I'm not sure what the outcome will be if it's any different to this point. But that said, seeing as we are waiting for legal advice, and I think I heard at least a couple of people say that they prefer to wait for the covenant to be resolved, it would seem sensible to, to carry on those conversations. I try not to be cynical, I always try to be an optimist. I don't see how things are going to change from a public point of view. You know, the numbers may move, but I take your point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just so that was kind of what I was thinking, we've had the consultation, the decisions made. And just to be clear that we're deferring for the legal issue. So I think the other thing is that play parks, we're saying allotments only serve a limited number of members of the community. But so the play parks, and I think there's a way that this could be done to have allotments, have a space, whatever the finer details of it are. But I think it's just worth raising that play parks have quite a limited audience as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yim?
Yeah, and a point of clarification, usually is I commend councillor Terry on that very kind of inspiring presentation about the need for play park, but my understanding was that it's basically out of the question to have a play park there because of the safety aspect. And it's not a question of us being prepared to take the risk. It's the, it's a railway line and there's a particular standard of safety that's required of any area that's designated as a play park next to that railway line. So that it is a standard that is required, it's not an optional thing. And we wouldn't be able to afford that, is that, is that how?
Yeah, do you want to come in then Nick, because I know you met the health and safety guy on the site. And the report, I think, has been made available to councillors and the public. Where are we at from a sort of health and safety point of view with the current site?
So the, the issue is the actual fence line that boundaries, boundaries between the railway line, like you say, and the site itself. So we would have to look at an upgrade of fencing to have a play area put onto that site. And to have it for the use for, for children to play in. So the recommendation was to renew the whole line of fencing that boundaries between the railway line and the site. We went back for a second opinion just to clarify if it is just that, that line that he's talking about or whether it's the actual frontage as well, because it's an old style fencing. We still are waiting an update from the inspector that came out to site, used the report. But as we get more details, then obviously we'll be able to update a bit further.
Yeah, and just on that particular point, because from the community drop-in last week, there was a really good question, which was it's an open space at the moment, should the fence line be upgraded now? Because it's an open space, or should we effectively stop people using it as an open space because the fence isn't adequate? So I have asked Nick to check that because is there a difference essentially between open space and equipped, an area with equipped, with equipment essentially? And I think that's a good point to check because I think there is a difference. If you put play equipment there, you're effectively encouraging families and children to use it. And that's why the higher fence is needed. I suspect if it's an open space, it doesn't need the higher fencing. So we need to tease that out and find out, you know, exactly where that stands. But if we put play equipment on there as Fetterton Council, we've got to increase the fence. It's a minimum of three metres is what we're talking about, which is about 20,000 pounds.
Mac? Thank you. I think there is quite a few issues that come out of this. So I've lived on that estate for 10 years. The issue with the Ramsey Close play area predates me massively. But it's been an issue for the Residents' Association for all of that time. And it's been bounded between council and Residents' Association as what could possibly be done with it. But used to have play equipment on it that no longer exists. The council has spent some money doing things on it, we've had a wildlife garden, we've, we've tried different things. But I will draw your attention to the fact that it has a quite recent sign on it that says Ramsey Close Play Area. And that's been on there for some period of time. So we can call it an open space, we can call it what we like, we, we have named it as a play area. Also, the issues that have lasted for so long have lasted for so long because we haven't done anything about it. You know, this is our fault, actually. We haven't maintained a better fence, we haven't done what is needed to make it a suitable area. So I, I'm one of those people actually that thought, do you know what, allotments might be a good idea. And this is where I found out that actually just because I think it's a good idea doesn't make it a good one. When I said that out loud, a couple of people said, yeah, I think that's a good idea too. So I thought, you know what, I'm on a winner here, this is really what the people want. Until you start picking away and asking more people. And we had a residents meeting last Thursday, which was one of the busiest I've ever seen. It went until 10 o'clock at night, people were demanding action and they were mentioning things I'd never even considered. So along with, you know, some of the points that Stuart raised there, it's, it's not only, and I'll take your point Hazel about it's a limited audience, but actually the amount of residents, he said, it isn't just about my kids, I want to go there with them, I want to be there with them. You know, seventeen, doesn't matter the number, allotments is unlikely to see that mixed ratio. There are families with, who, who made it very clear that their disabled children and their abled children couldn't, they needed somewhere on the estate to go to. One resident even said, I used to play there as a kid and I moved back to this estate because I knew that was there and I could take my children to it. Actually, I was involved in the, the petition that went round, really so that I could gauge what people were thinking. Because unfortunately, I was working when we had the, the consultation meeting. And one of the things that surprised me was the amount of people said, ah, just a bloke, we've got some kids in here, I want to talk to you about this. And they came forward and says, we want somewhere to go, we, we go there now, why can't we keep having it? So the children are absolutely involved. And it made me think, have I turned into one of those people who does to children what people used to do to me and told me, this is not your business? You know, this is for grownups. And it reminded me very much of the, the thing we attended, the Youth Survival Board. You know, this is something we really need to think about, rather than saying, this is what we're doing and we're just waiting for a a, a legal procedure to happen and then it's going to happen. Perhaps we ought to be asking them what they want. And I absolutely get the point, we will never please everybody. And that was clear in the, in the, the pollers we went round asking, some people were absolutely for it. But there's another thing that I would advise us against. There's an old saying that turkeys never vote for Christmas, unless you tell them that it's a really good time for kids and the oven's going to be lovely and warm. And we are slightly guilty of that in the way we sold the, the allotments. You know, it's allotments or it's going to be nothing, is the kind of impression a lot of the residents got. And they, I didn't say this, they fed it back. And I said, well, I'm not quite sure and trying to defend it, but this is the feeling people have. So I think a pause is, is something we definitely need to do. I think some of the comments that have come back were interesting. Twenty-one people for the allotments, seven of them whom made without a comment. One said he would like to exclude a communal area, the other one said he wanted one. Eleven of the rest all said, yeah, we'll have allotments, but they all had various caveats that they wanted to put on it. So that tells us quite clearly that people do want something different than just the allotments that we're proposing. So I, I think that to say we're just waiting for that legal piece is a mistake. And the, and the final bit I would say is, you know, this, this bit about the, the children and we've talked about, one of the gentlemen mentioned Fields in Trust, made a great sort of lengthy debate about how many open spaces are being lost through the, across the country. And what they're trying to do is actually establish almost, I'm going to equate it to like a, a great two listing so that, you know, that place is secured. And I think that's something that we could potentially do, there's more we could do that is good for the future than just the allotments. And I say that as one of the people who thought it was the greatest idea ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment? Terry?
Yeah. I think, the first thing to say is, I agree, we can't do anything till we get a covenant, that's, you know, that's non-negotiable. So, so there is a pause. I think this has been the town council acting in the very, very best interests of the people. We've consulted, I went round the campus Ramsey Close last May. You and I and a couple of people went round and consulted Ramsey Close Hawthorn and Mountbatten recently. We put a letter out that we paid for our party and then we put another letter out and had a consultation. We've taken on board the replies we got, people didn't want bonfires, we said we won't have bonfires. People were concerned about parking, we addressed the issue of parking. I'm sure there are other ones that are going to follow. We're very receptive to people's comments. There's no point in doing this unless it's going to work. I'm still for it.
Yim?
Yeah, sorry, one more for me then. I get that there's a range of views on this, I attended the consultation and I talked to residents myself. I, and I don't really mind where we end up on the, on the use of the land, I guess. I don't have a particularly strong kind of vested interest in the way, but what I think would be a real shame would be if we just kind of kicked the can down the road and ended up doing nothing with it. Because we can't decide what to do, and I kind of feel like, you know, there is a real risk of that happening. So if it was going to be that or doing the allotments, bearing in mind that we can adapt what we've presented to accommodate some of the wishes of the community, like perhaps having a community allotment as well as some other things. And I would be for taking action and doing something with it.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more if I may, Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I just thought on the, the health and safety aspect, I've read through the report and, and you know, it's fairly clear. But like every health and safety report, what that actually says is there is a risk at present if we don't do anything with the fence. However, if we put a fence up, the risk is reduced or completely gone, similar to how we look at a fire risk assessment. So, you know, the, the fact that we haven't done one previously doesn't mean we can't do one now. And let's not forget, if we, if we just tweak the fact that one's an open space and one's a play area and it's different rules for the safety aspect, I'm sure that there will be an occasion where people take their children to the allotments. So, you know, for me, that kind of health and safety, it feels like an excuse that we're using, whether it is or not.
Regarding the health and safety of allotments, you're allowed to take your children on the allotments as long as they stay within your allotment space and don't run about. They're not allowed to take toys, packing poles, et cetera, onto the allotments, the allotments are going to be secure. If they do, they will lose their plot. They're not allowed to have that, take the stock value, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, and I do health and safety check on the allotments. One of the concerns said to me was, it's surrounded by houses. Four out of our five allotment sites in Fetterford are surrounded by houses. Very Road, London Road, Itmied Way, Magdern Street are all surrounded by houses. Itmied Way, sorry, Magdern Road, Magdern Street is a very small allotment site, which is normally backs on behind the old people's houses. Itmied Way is yet again a small allotment site with only eleven on it, houses. London Road is bigger, surrounded by houses, Very Road is surrounded by houses. In fact, it's in an estate really. You know, it's part of course we have proven if, if some of the residents want, they'll take a round to look at the allotments. So I can say what our allotments are like and how well managed they are and how we keep an eye on them. And give all the work, I'll go round with it, it's not a problem.
Thank you. I just want to pick up one of the points that was made about essentially we're making it or it's being framed as, as a decision between play area or allotment. And I think that's really unfortunate because I've not heard anybody say that Norwich Road doesn't need additional play equipment. And I made that point to the residents. All over Fetterford, we need additional play equipment. Where I live on Cloverfield's thousand houses, we've got a tiny piece of play equipment that's not suitable for anybody frankly, or very tiny children. And I absolutely want to see improved play equipment for Norwich Road Estate. Because if you look at a map of where our play areas are, there is a gap on Norwich Road Estate. Personally, I would like to see as a sort of quick measure, the Fairfields play area upgraded. I think it's a good play area, it's, it's well looked after. And there is an opportunity to expand outwards and increase the amount of play equipment. And I was amused at the consultation that I had some people telling me that. And I was amused at the consultation that I had some people telling me that absolutely nobody from Norwich Road Estate uses that play equipment. And then lots of other people telling me how they love walking there to use that piece of play equipment. And it just, you know, the sort of differences of views and opinions are interesting. So absolutely, we should be looking at that. And I also think that the town council should be serious about approaching the school, about using the school playing field for play equipment. The most logical place for a play area on Norwich Road Estate is the land opposite the shops, which is owned by the school. It's very rarely used for school purposes. And even if it is very well used, they certainly don't use every inch of the the play area of the of the field. So I think, you know, if we're serious as a town council, we should be looking at that. And if the school are amenable, they haven't been in the past, but schools do change, we should be looking at that. So, you know, everybody agrees that we need improved play equipment. We've doubled as a council the amount of money that we spend on play areas, which I'm really pleased about. In addition, we've spent eighty thousand pounds upgrading all of our play areas, thirteen play areas. And in lots of areas, it's the district council who have far more money than we do as a town council. They look after the play areas. In Fethford, it's Fethford Town Council that look after all of them. You know, and that's one of the challenges we've got, that we're in a an area where, you know, if we don't provide pay areas, there won't be any at all. And that's the sort of, you know, harsh reality of it. But we're left picking up the pieces. Same toilets, the same with lots of open space and wooded area. It's all been shoved over to the town council in the last twenty years. Anyway, I could go on. And I'm going to make a suggestion and sort of listen to everybody's opinions. And I think it's free fold. And one request that once investigations around the covenant are completed, the issue goes before full council for determination. Two, in the interim, period, continue conversations with the community whilst the covenant issue progresses. And three, pursue options for improved improved play area provision in the area. Any comments on that recommendation or proposal?
So I I think that's really worthwhile because it sets out a plan of progress. I would caveat the middle point about what we actually do with Ramsey in that the the residents were really, really quite understanding about the cost of play equipment. They're all very, they're all very reasonable and said, you know, who can afford that these days? We probably wouldn't get it. And that's why many of them were seeking for a compromise. They were looking for more or less half allotment or communal planting, half green space play area. And a well managed green space is what they were talking about. Of course, there's costs for that, but it's vastly different from a brand new playground, if that helps.
Yeah, no, I think it doesn't. A great respect to the resident who drew a picture of what the location could be as part of the consultation. I thought that was brilliant. And, you know, we need to go through all of those comments and suggestions and sort of digest them, basically. I agree. And so I'm happy to make that proposal one, two and three as read. Would somebody like to second that, please? Yeah, Ian, all those in favour? Agreed. Thank you very much. Move on to item seven three, unlocking Fethford's potential fund to review and discuss all of the applications received. Then you're going to show us a list of applications received, I hope.
As we monitored the, we didn't have an application process that you just download and then and then send it if you did. We actually made sure that we tracked who we sent the application forms to. And there was quite a substantial taker. Sometimes unfortunately the name of the person that applied for the the grant or, yeah, the fund. And the person and the organisation responded on this series the same. So it's quite difficult to match. What I've done is I've just put as an extra A, this thing, we have a very diverse grouping of of the.
Oh, sorry. I haven't flicked to that page. Thank you.
There's a, there's a very diverse group. A lot of people have previously applied for small grants. So this is just an opportunity to leverage extra money to pursue bigger projects. There's a bit of a, some spelling mistakes. I've just added one as a bounce off bounce center, bounce off museum. We've gone out, we've also, we have people come back to us and say, look, we don't believe that we are eligible. We are back and said, well, you are eligible. You've previously received four grants, the process in the in the framework is very similar. So what we've done, so we've got all these small grants, and what we haven't had the opportunity of doing is really going through it and make sure that there's legal compliance. Right information. There's just, it was just too much to do before before this particular meeting. And then it's really just a matter of assessing what is the actual nature of the programme. This is something that the council would like to put into the pot for a pretty good team process. Everyone's looking, yes, I'll just quickly continue paging through. You can just see that. It's too much detail on the, there it goes. You'll just see that there's significant variation in sessions that have applied, churches, charities, schools, gyms, sports clubs. And even culture, activities. So let's go.
Who's who in Fethford's charity sector?
That's really interesting. Well, I mean, comment on each one, though.
Well firstly, Alan, just to thank you to you and the team for, one, receiving the requests, getting the information out to people and processing them when they've come in. Because I think we sort of created a bit of a a job for you. I think I just tallied up nearly twenty applications that have been received, which is really positive. But we've created a bit of work for you because somebody's got to go through and assess these applications. And I had a little chat with Alan before the meeting today because I was aware how many people had applied. My view is if it's a true participatory budgeting process, so long as they meet the eligibility criteria, and we're not funding a private business or whatever. Or they don't have the right insurance, as long as it meets the criteria, they should go forward to the the public vote. That's the nature of participatory budgeting. And I think probably what we need to do as a committee is agree to give Alan and the team some time to go through the compliance aspect to make sure that they've got the right constitution and the bank account and that sort of thing. And that, I think, will take at least a few weeks, given that there are twenty applications. And quite frankly, if they don't meet the compliance, then I'll take Alan's word for it and they don't go forward to the next stage. It's as simple as that. We can't put people forward that don't comply. So that's the first point. The second point, and this is really for the committee to decide. There's a few groups I know who were sent applications, but for whatever reason, haven't returned them by the five P M, four P M, five P M deadline yesterday. And I just want the committee to indicate if they are still happy to receive those applications or if it's a hard cutoff and that's that. Because it may be they've decided not to apply, but equally, there may be some groups, I mean, I'll give you a really good example. Fethford Dolphins, you know, I met with them and encouraged them to apply one for a small grant and to participatory budgeting. They requested an application form, but they haven't returned it. And they were, you know, in dire straits financially. Do we say, no, you've had your chance, the cutoff's the cutoff? Or do we give a bit of flexibility and allow people? You know, I'm really torn on that one.
It's a deadline, it's a deadline, isn't it?
Well, that's for the committee to decide. Terry?
Um, yeah, Stuart. Yeah. I mean, there's no point in having a cutoff if you're not going to adhere to it. And as much as we, you know, the point of this is to give money away and we want to, you know, we want as many people as possible to benefit. The the cutoff is there for a reason, I think, isn't it? Maybe that's maybe that's way harsh.
Alan?
Two points actually. The point of this is not to give money away, is to help the community groups. From my perspective.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely correct.
I'd disagree on that point. And coming from the charity sector, knowing that applying and bidding, and sometimes you run a volunteers and you just run people's goodwill and time to get paperwork done. And sometimes you're tight on a budget, but you don't have the people to get the paperwork done on time. I'm trying to be understanding here that the money goes for really good causes and I want to help them out. So if that means we extend, give another week extensions just for those last minute applications to come in. And then the ones we're aware of can pump them and say, look, we have one more week, but this is it. There needs to come in, otherwise we'll not make the cuts. And fair enough, because we have to draw the line at some point. But a little bit of flexibility goes a long way because I can understand some groups' struggles to get paperwork done. And and the bureaucracy that goes with it. And I think Alan more than anybody can understand just how much paperwork goes into these applications. And by the number of applications we're having and the amount of compliance documents we have to go through. And so I would extend a bit. I think it'd be a time to be flexible to the groups, so allow them the opportunity to participate.
Thank you. Hazel?
And I think the point of the headline is that, you know, you're done and there's, it's ready to go after that. But if we're spending a few weeks on following up on the paperwork and it's actually not going to impact the team, if we add that time on, then I don't see a problem.
Glad I asked the question now, because I was really torn on it. Chris?
I would agree. I think there might be reason, there might be reason why they haven't put their applications in. Let's give them another couple of weeks and see what happens. I will eat up. I'd often get in trouble now, I know.
You might do that. That's what you're going to say.
The applications.
Yep.
Right. Really, Lord, ninety nine percent say it's applications. I'm just a bit puzzled with one.
Okay.
Okay.
Which one? Which one would that be?
You're looking at me, Chris. The Sonic Hall. The Sonic Hall.
Yeah. I'm very concerned. There was tales that the Sonic Hall was going to be sold off for apartments. We don't know whether it's ever happened, et cetera, et cetera. No, I can't, sorry.
No, that's either, we're here to, you know, a checking process. And you've clicked yes for compliance with that one, Alan. Presumably they're sort of registered charity or the likes. And in that sense, they're compliant?
Sorry.
We've just had a high level compliance. It needs to be a more detailed one. We just didn't have enough time to do it.
Right. My major concern is the fact that nearly all of these other places are open to everybody. The Sonic Lodge, you can't go in unless you've broken your treadmill or something. You know, bits and pieces and stuff like this. So that concerns me, that it's not open to everyone in the whole town.
Okay.
And I cannot understand, this is normally very rough for folks, so why not?
I think the the point about doing particularly anything to do with building work and then potentially selling off. One of the conditions normally around grants is you have a sort of a payback period. And so we, you know, for anything related to building work, I think we can build that into the conditions if they were successful. But it may be that they're not eligible once Alan's done the the proper check because of the the membership. Ordinarily with grants, if it's not open access membership, they're not eligible. So I'm I'm sure Alan will review that one. Hazel, then Terry.
And the other thing is, if it's voting, if there's hardly any people that can use the resource, then they're not going to get many votes in that way, if they were eligible.
Yeah, they might have a lobby mind.
Don't they, folks? Thank you. Terry?
Sort of just a little addition to the point I made earlier. I'm I'm a bit concerned about the the amount of time and work it's taken for you to sort this out, which is another reason for a deadline, really. I mean, out of these things, work is so hot at the moment. We don't really want to give them more work.
Thank you, Stuart.
Yeah, honestly, not so. The only thing I'm concerned about, and that sounds probably, is the, to determine a public meeting. Now, that's not going to be a full council, is it? Because obviously, we've known what's happened in the last two to four councils. And suddenly we've invited these people to do their sales pitch. And we've got people that are disrupting the meeting in the first place. And then they'll cry that there's some sort of scam going on between the town council and these people that applied for it. So how do we get around that?
The intention is not to do it at a full council meeting. It'll be a standalone meeting, partly because with twenty applications, even if they all had just five minutes. It will take an evening to get through them. And then you've got to do the voting aspect. So it will be a standalone meeting. And in order to vote, you have to be a resident of Fethford. Yes, if 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 people want to turn up and, you know, disrupt a meeting, giving money away to charity, then that's up to them. Collins?
I just want to add that point, basically. And when it comes to if the money is the funds for capital investment, which was mentioned before, usually there's always a clause. There's an asset blocking place that whatever was funded, you know, whatever item or piece of investment was funded with the money, that's usually, it could be three, five years. It depends how you write down the clause. But it holds the item or the piece, you know, whatever. It can be a machine or a building prepared. Then it holds it down for a while, for the purpose of the community, for the purpose of serving the ends of the grant. So there's something going on for it into the paperwork.
Yeah. Mac, Joanna?
So just back on to the point of deadlines. I do think that if you have a deadline, that's it. However, I really do take the point about volunteers doing stuff and and, you know, charities under stretch is quite difficult. What I would say is, we do we do need to draw a line in the sand so that this doesn't become a repeat thing for next year. And just as Hazel was saying, really, once you receive bids in, generally there is a period. People have got stuff wrong. And that's the period where we say, your deadline is this. However, there is another deadline which gives you that re-show time and for those who haven't completed. So I think that's a good get out clause without then extending it further again. You see what I mean?
Okay. Could I have a show of hands in favour of a hard cutoff? Oh, sorry, Hazel. Yeah.
But extending the deadline, we couldn't be sending out new forms to people that haven't engaged it and just be following.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's really important. Yeah, yeah, good point.
I agree on that.
Yeah, thanks for that. And so just on that point, I think we really sort of, we can have a show of hands. Are you happy for the staff to chase up any applications that have already been requested but not yet received?
Yeah, it's just a notch to the to the applicants to do it. Yeah.
And are you happy for Alan and the team to go through the applications and to ensure compliance? And discount any that they don't feel are compliant?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then once they are compliant, are we happy for Alan to contact the groups that are compliant and tell them that they've got through to the next stage? So that they can begin the process of getting their presentation ready and that sort of thing? Thank you. Happy with all that?
Yeah. Really?
We should just, how much is that extension? It's going to give a notch, I'm going to moral shortly after this meeting to the ones that received the application but haven't had put it in. And what is our final deadline as they reset? There's got to be, you know, there's got to be really times. There's got to be definitely one, because otherwise it's just tolls. Alan, then you're a third group from, you're a senior.
You really, really have to go to bed now.
Um, should I, should we suggest the next amenities meeting, we will have the final list by that point? That makes sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
So our April amenities committee will be published with the final list, and that will be the list that goes forward to the public vote.
Do we know, sorry, do we know when the event is going to happen yet?
No.
It's in April, obviously.
I think most likely it will be in April. Partly depends on the availability of the Carnegie.
Yeah.
Fair, yeah.
Unless we go in the guilt of one a cold.
Hmm, not much.
We won by the.
Won by April.
No.
Do you want, I think we probably need the best proposer and second are just to report to the members. Proposed by Chris, seconded by Stuart. All those in favour? Thank you. And that sort of mops up all of those points that we agreed. Right, I'm going to rattle through folks because it's nearly half seven. Item seven three four, use of barn across car park as a road repair compound. Nick?
Okay, so officers, officers received notification from Norfolk County Council that roadworks and carriageway maintenance. That roadworks and carriageway maintenance will be carried out on Berry Road and is scheduled to take place between the twentieth of May. For eight days, this work will be conducted at night to reduce the network impact. And they're looking to request that they can use the Barnham Cross car park with the height barriers, the height restriction barriers. For a temporary compound while the works are carried out. We have gone back to them and asked if there would be any sort of small availability of a grant or something to the council for the use of the car park. We haven't heard anything back, but obviously they are requiring a decision from the commission. Everybody's happy for them to use the car park while work is carried out. Thoughts, Chris?
As long as they put it back to the status before they got there.
Just one of my points. I have two. The other one is, they can afford, I mean, if they can charge a hundred fifty K for for a crossing. In a safety area, but they were going to charge us. I'm sure they can ship in five hundred thousand quid for the rental of a parking space and they do the works on the road. Come on.
Do you think they'd like to tell Mackie for us as well, while they're doing the roads?
It's nothing we could ask.
This I can do.
Magic, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, just bear in mind that the one at the Healthy Living Centre has taken six months to lay down. They might put it out of bounds for the rest of the summer. And what I would say on that is, and it was on the back of what you were saying about leaving it in the condition, at very least, they found it in or tarmac it.
Yeah.
And and the reason I say that is when we look at the work that was done along Hearth Way, where they dug up the verge and have just left it as muddled. Have they not done anything to to reseed that or make it good? And and I would hate that to happen to, you know, a bit that we own.
No, I agree.
There is a guarantee when you.
They're going to install jobs in the common though, are they?
No, no. And I'm sensing that we agree in principle and we're happy for Nick to get the best possible return from the council.
Absolutely.
Um, at risk of revealing our parts, because I'm sure that they watch our meetings. If we get something great, but if not, we're happy to go ahead. Okay? Jan?
I just wondered, are they going to use up all that space then?
So they are talking about using the main whole car park area for the eight days.
I've just seen, like, we've got a lot of grief from the residents who can't park. And what would they do? What would their alternative often be?
If you can't park it for a long.
I I think that's a really good point. I think we should insist on leaving at least part of the space for car parking. Okay. You know, it shouldn't, it should be possible for their compound to be designed, because that is, you know, that car park's used a lot.
Yeah, it is. You've got to pinch one of the edges.
Uh, yep. Um, what are we proposing? I forgot already.
Just give them permission to use it.
Yes. Would somebody like to propose that we give permission and delegate to Nick the finer details?
Happy to.
Thank you, Mac. And a seconder?
I'm I'm only agreeing that there's a thing about this, they will shipping something for the use of the car park because they can afford it. And if they're listening, I hope they are. That's the right thing to do.
I was getting very first. The iron seconded that. All those in agreement with the proposal?
I'm out.
Thank you. All those against, fella?
I'm not against. I'm abstaining. I hope they're paid for it.
She's going to go down there and rattle the tin.
Somebody asked you.
Uh, yep. Seven, three, five. Everyone has the right to play, to discuss and decide whether and how best to make our play parks fully inclusive. For everyone, as is requested by Stuart. Would you like to say a few words of instruction?
So every child has the right to play. This means every single child, whatever their culture, impairment, gender, language, background, behaviour or need. The right to play is accepted universally and is set out in the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child. The convention recognises that free play is not an optional extra for children. It is a fundamental to their physical, social, mental and emotional development and intrinsic to their health and happiness in the present moment. As such, play relates closely to many of the other important articles in the convention. Now, I'm proposing that the Fetter Town Council sign the pledge, everyone has the right to play. And that the Fetter Town Council reviews and replaces park furniture when it is in a state of disrepair and replaces the equipment with suitable equipment for all.
Thank you. And I thought that was a really good discussion at full council about this. And I've read the stuff that was online. I wasn't able to go, but it seems like it was a really good event. And where do we stand at the moment, Nick, with sort of DDA compliant equipment? And because I know we upgraded Castle Park and there was a wheelchair accessible element built into that.
Yeah, so we've got the nest swings located that both Castle Park and Red Castle allow exclusive play.
Yeah.
Um, but there's always room for improvement, definitely. Um, a lot of our equipment is kind of equipment that we've inherited over the years and a lot of the layer is on the estates. And so we have to kind of look going forward at replacing some bits. So that's again where that could come in.
Mac?
Some of the some of the stuff we talked about at that was was not actually big pieces of equipment. It's like sensory stuff. So it's, you know, almost like small braille pads or or touch elements to it. And and actually, the cost of those would be far reduced. And they wouldn't necessarily have to wait for a piece of other play equipment to fail. Um, there is a danger, and I mentioned this quite clearly, that it becomes a, sorry, that's my. A tick box exercise where councils put one in as a token effort to say, we're all over this stuff. When actually, there's a lot of other things that are awkward, like, you know, accessible parking, people be out and get into the place in a wheelchair, you know, all that kind of stuff. Let alone go on it. So but I think by putting those small bits in. That, you know, in areas where we can't do big gestures, brand new swings and and stuff is an option.
With that in mind, we have a youth advisory board in Fettford, which is, you know, really successful. And I know you're the Breckland appointed rep on that. Could we ask them to come up with a list of suggestions and present us a sort of a wish list? I mean, I'm welcome if they want to come here and present it to us.
It would be better to have it in amenities, because I don't want to do again that.
Yeah, I'll bring it to amenities. Yeah, no, I come to amenities. Um, and then we can cost them up and look at, you know, look at what we can do.
On the other, also, if you, if the town council sign up to the pledge, it also opens doors for grants. Towards, you know, there's certain companies who will offer grants if you sign up to their pledge.
Okay, Hazel?
And I was wondering if there's advice or guidance on engaging with the residents around the parks? Because if there's specific residents that have specific needs, they could benefit rather than having the same thing at all.
It's a good point, but one of the things they brought up was actually, these become destination venues. There's such a paucity of it across the country that people travel for thirty or forty miles to take, either they're disabled or when they're adults, their own disability. To a location. So, uh, because that point was made. And they said, actually, if you build it, people will come because generally it's it's in poor, poor supply throughout the country.
Thank you. Carla?
Support of the initiative. Because. And one. So one of many things to do with our with our students from a day centre was taking them onto parks where there was a built different one. And it was, they were rare and scarce. So we've got to come with that. So that is something that needs to be addressed. Inclusivity should be put into any policy to look at and definitely play the successful, especially open door places to everybody.
Okay, so I'm sensing that we want to sign up to the pledge. And we want to invite the youth advisory board to come up with some proposals for how we could make our existing play areas more inclusive. Yeah. Would you like to propose that?
I'd like to propose that.
Would somebody like, Mac, would you like to second? All those in favour? Thank you.
Alan's got the forms, you can start some coaching.
Item seven, three, six, health and safety matters. To note the update, are there any health and safety matters?
No.
How's the Harvey?
Well, I've been contacted by a couple of residents who also posted something on Facebook as well. And it goes back to something we mentioned at the last meeting about floodwater do not end up.
Hmm.
I was down in Spring Walks recently and there was a young mum and her child walking through the water alongside the river. I had no idea where the river bank was. Actually, we should have some, hopefully it won't happen anymore till next autumn time, but I think we should have just a couple of signs saying floodwater do not end up. We had that case for that poor little lad working out. It's just, yep, the next of waiting to happen. You can't see the river bank. You have no idea where it is.
No, I agree. I saw some videos of people cycling through.
Yes, you do, yes. That's just my.
Thank you.
Floodwater is not sanitary.
No. Well, that was Chris jumping in there, Nick. Did you have any health and safety? Does anyone else have any health and safety? No, but we'll take that point. Can we note that in the actions, Karen, that we'll get some signage? Because I think it is a good point, actually. Again, it's not something that we are responsible for as a town council, but actually, it's relatively cheap, I'd imagine. And actually, it could make, you know, save someone's life.
Be roped off, really.
Jan?
Yeah, I was dropping colleague off on Kingsfleet the other day and we were discussing how there's no street lighting there. But, I mean, that seems like a health and safety issue to me for residents on Kingsfleet, that there's just no street lighting.
And sorry, I laughed because this came up at Breckland meeting last week or the week before. And the the situation with Kingsfleet is that under new legislation. The developers don't have to put in street lighting or community footway lighting essentially. And so they approached Breckland, and Breckland don't have to take it on. So Breckland approached Fettford Town Council. And at the time, the town council turned it down and said, we're not prepared to put the lighting in or look after it on an ongoing basis. And that's why there isn't any lighting. And it was pointed out at Breckland last week that the town council could have chosen to do that and take it on. The view was that we don't look after any other lighting and therefore why should we? This, yeah, local government got mad, frankly, in sort of bureaucracy aspect of it. As ever, people look to us as the town council, but it's really not our job to provide lighting, I would suggest.
Especially since the pavements aren't even finished or anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Stripped hazards everywhere.
Um, I think it is something I do want to take away and potentially look at again as a town council, just to see if this new council has the same view as the previous council. And but that's the the history of it.
I was slight in the previous, and this one, I I remain with my opinion that street lighting should be provided by generic government, you know. Funding, whatever, through the county council, whatever that may be, or it should be worked out with developers from 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 day one. Come build a full estate and meet people in the dark. That is just ridiculous, as we can see. Um, but also the demand responsibility, of course, that would incur on us as a small, you know, parish council, as a town council. Taking on the light which is something never we've never done before, like you mentioned. Why wouldn't we do that? It's a resource to do so. So it's really not on us as a council, as a town, to do that. It's developers together with county council and the high high eye in the ladder and government for them to decide it was going to give provision to that. And this is some portion, something that should be discussed before they put their houses in place. When there was nobody to provide the lights. Now, that's all right. They're trying to work in retrospective. In the meanwhile, the new residents are stumbling upon pathways like you would say. Well, I don't agree with us taking on the lights. I think we should lobby, if the county council or web or developers. Find an agreement, find the funding and sort that out and sort it out as soon as possible so the people can get lights on the street.
I agree. I think it's something we'll have a wider discussion about as a point, because. We're in a silly situation where the residents of Kingsfleet pay the same council tax, but don't have any streetlights. You know, and I I think increasingly, they will come to the town council, say, where's our lights and where's this and where's that?
I think what's worse for them is they actually pay a residential fee as well. So they they pay a fee to pre for all the green space and the play areas.
Yes, of course, yeah.
So it's a little bit like other areas that pay those sort of things.
We'll be asked to take those on at some point, as well.
Probably. But but I would say on our own website, we say, we're not responsible for streetlights and, you know, once we start adding that in. That's going to make our responsibilities look massively different.
And I wonder how much of the paperwork that from the developers when they bought the purchase of rented the property and they told them that the property does not come, it's shit like that. So maybe this is something they should really.
That went in the brain.
Across the the social media and, you know, wash out way by the property because it might not have initially was electric until they built a substitution. Now, 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 now is not the provision of electricity. It's electric people for themselves. It's always something, but it's not for this council to deal with.
As you raise it now, I know. Sure felt. Now, moving on, uh, seven, three, seven. Do you have any correspondence to note?
There are two items of correspondence. The first one really is around the fish pass. So we've just had people preparing that the fish pass is not a fat, the the thing. Uh, which we've never said it is. So I I've been, it's been emailed to me, so I will be responding just so the committee aware. That the the fish pass was there as a passage of fish. It doesn't prevent flooding if the river devil's rise way above that. Unfortunately, it's been flooded four times so far this year and and, you know, the way that the river's going, it might flood again, but but. That's how we, that's the official response that we have. The second one is a little bit quite difficult because someone approached me to do an from an open space policy. But they didn't get the information out before we really got the agenda out. So they emailed me and I responded to them. Send them the application form and they sent this to us on Sunday, hoping that it would be discussed today. So essentially, what it is, Norfolk Orienteering Club, they have an event sometime in, on the twentieth of April. Uh, and their biggest challenge is parking. So they were asking us to park that, that we park right by the river, by Bill Lane, the area there. Also, I don't think we're going to exceed to, but I'm a little bit stuck because the event is on the twentieth of April. Our next meeting is early April, whether we can go back, if I can assess the forms, ensure that they've got compliance. But if they produce, if if they look at the parking plan, say, your parking plan cannot include that particular area. We've just seen that if we start having public parking on those green areas, we're stuck forever and ever. And maybe redirect them to other areas of the town that could park it, but then find Walker Car Park is one, for example, that might be suitable. And I know there have been discussions with the the chair, there might be some other places that we could say. And if they could put that into a parking plan, which everyone's supposed to do these days, we could, we could give them assurance that. It'll be tabled at the end, and there's nothing, you know, it's just an orienteering event that they hold throughout Norfolk. This is the first time that you can have that for quite a while.
It feels like there are better spaces, doesn't it, than that particular space? Um, it's small and it's well used. So, you know, a larger area, perhaps somewhere different, would seem more appropriate, wouldn't it?
The nice grass area that we've really been watching turned up by the by the fireworks.
Come by boat. Is that the sort of general view of the committee that we would encourage them to use other areas than the grass at Bill Lane?
Well, I think it would be very difficult for us if we said, yeah, please use it, and anybody else who comes on, but not you.
Yes, quite.
So and we do this a lot. We say, you know, please don't go on there because it causes us so much cost. And and if we allow somebody else, it would look pretty bad.
Thank you.
I like the fact it's orienteering because the first job is to find the start.
Yeah.
Uh, correspondence, thank you. Action points from previous meeting. I've just had a quick run through. Um, there's several still in progress, but there's a few that we can remove. Uh, the first is the issue of the bin at the grammar school, or near to the grammar school. And we've heard tonight from Nick that that has gone in and that is being well used, which is very positive. So we can take that one off the action points. Um, Mac, is there any update about the locations of redundant signage that was on the list?
That that was what I was talking to Nick about earlier. And what I really need to do is provide him a map. Um, because I started to write it out and actually go down the road a bit, turn left a bit. It sounded like the worst orienteering thing you ever had. And they're so far spread apart is the other thing. So it's going to take a drive round. So I think the easiest thing I'm going to do is just provide him a map. And give him a general location and then they'll see it from the wagon.
Thank you. Um, for town team manager to contact men shared regard in the provision of bird bat and owl boxes. That has been done and some have already been made, so that one can be taken off. The job update, job adverts to be updated and distributed as soon as possible. And we've heard that they are live and we are receiving applications. So that has been done.
I did number five.
Oh, you did number five. I was going to skip that one. And you have to write up to Nest and Fr- is that a little printed report that you gave us?
Hmm. Well, Cheryl gave that. I gave a little update on Frederick's Wood pit.
Yeah, that'd be so we can remove five as well.
Sorry, sir.
Number two.
Who knows, Frederick?
Number two.
Number ten.
Frederick's Wood. I've done some research, okay? Um, Frederick, Prince Frederick, was a prince. He was never benighted. So there's no reason why it should be Sir Frederick's Wood. It's either Frederick's Wood or Prince Frederick's Wood.
But the issue is, we don't know who gave the wood in the first place.
Well, it wasn't. It wasn't Sir Frederick. Well, it wasn't. It wasn't Sir Frederick, I'll tell you that.
It wasn't Prince Frederick. You might not have been here for this discussion last time, Matt.
I'm afraid not.
I was looking forward to finding out.
We had a debate about Frederick's Wood, which I've always known as Frederick's Wood, suddenly becoming Sir Frederick's Wood. And is it named after Prince Freddie? Or is it named after Sir Frederick, who was the MP for Fettford and related to the Grafton family and all the rest?
It was 100% named after Prince Frederick.
So we, and that was my understanding. But anyway, so we've given Nick some homework to do to to find out, because we call it Frederick's Wood there, but in
It's in, it's, there's two different cultures within this document.
We just, we want to know, once and for all.
I think if we keep it and just add in sir to all our other things, anything else we own, it will give us a sense of gravity. Other towns simply can't match.
Real. So any other questions or comments on the action points? Several were taken off, and then there's a few gone on from tonight. Community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation? Any comments or suggestions from anybody? There's been quite a lot of press releases related to the town team stuff the last few weeks, keeping our community engagement person happy. Where are we at with small grants? We gave money to Cloverfield Church and Stanley Fourth Bowl. So we didn't press releases about either of those?
I'll hold you, John.
Okay, we'll do that or something. Committee officers update, receive any updates from a committee officer since the agenda of this meeting was issued? None? Anything else anyone wants to raise?
Sorry, community engagement, will we want to do the right to play, the pledge for rights of people?
Just one second.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a picture of it as well. So I can go on to the site.
I think Alan's got one then.
You might have to help Hazel foil the press release, because she won't know the background, but if you could help her with that and yeah, that's a really good suggestion. Right, we are four minutes within time before Karen tells me off. Going over two hours. There'll be no further business. The meeting is closed. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Good chance to do a recording.
Tea. I've eaten all my mint and I'm still hungry. I can't eat another mint.